We could fund, on an ongoing basis, affordable housing. They included things like a line item in the budget, they included the use of free cash, it included a property transfer fee, and a building permit surcharge. The Board has discussed it modestly a couple of times. I know the Finance Committee has looked at it. It looks at this stage as though we would come to town meeting with one or two warrant articles, but we're not sure yet. One warrant article would be of the form of if free cash, I'm not going to spend time explaining free cash, I'm looking at the audience, we've got a lot of rookies out there. The town has sort of a guideline that free cash will be within certain percentages of the budgets. And so one warrant article might be, as long as free cash is within that limit, then there would be an annual appropriation of free cash to an affordable housing fund of some kind. The amount and all that has yet to be worked out, but that would be one article. The second article would probably have two parts to it, and again, it would be related to a building permit surcharge and a transfer fee. If the town wanted to move ahead with either of these two funding mechanisms for affordable housing, they would require legislative action. So it's not something we can just do on our own. So, the warrant article, if it comes to the town meeting at all, it will come in one of two forms. It will either encourage the Select Board to be in contact with the state legislature to move these two funding opportunities forward, or it will encourage them to explore with the state legislature how this would be done. It's pretty complicated. It's a simple idea to say, you know, you're going to be a transfer tax of so-and-so, but the actual legislation, I think that could be complicated. So, that looks at this stage like there would be perhaps a one, a free cash article, and then another article that would either ask us to go do it, or go figure out how and could it be done.
Thanks, Mike. There would also now be a bylaw to ban the neonicotides on town and Concord-Carlyle regional high school property. There's a committee that I believe the town meeting urged us to set up in the past, and they've come up with a proposal. There would be a bylaw to amend the posting of town meeting warrant, which would remove the requirement of posting the town warrant in each of the precincts. You may recall that at the special town meeting, we were one day short of being able to do that, and it took a great effort to get the legislature to okay what took on at the special town meeting. The posting of the warrants, I think dated probably to colonial times. We still would be mailing out, there would still be adequate, and more than adequate notice of the town meeting and the warrant articles, but this is a, I think, largely dated requirement that it be posted in each of the precincts. So, we're working on that. And last is the possible conservation restriction on the former landfill site being discussed with Walden Woods Project. You'll recall that's on the other side of Route 2. The Walden Woods Project is interested in, a number of years ago, they had a proposal to have a conservation restriction that they would compensate the town for. That did not pass because it was at the time when the issue of the use of the, perhaps, bus depot and other town uses that their restriction would not allow, so it failed at town meeting. We're discussing with them perhaps an agreement that would allow the town to have the uses that the town feels are necessary, but would restrict things like putting buildings up over there, and there might be some compensation involved in that. So with that, I don't know if Tom Tarpe's here, but I see Dean, are you filling in, or is Tom here?
I don't really know what the slides look like, so I didn't hear your opinion.
Terrific.
I'm sorry for this confusion. I think Tom would be here. I'll be happy to do that.
I was scanning the crowd and didn't see him, but did see you, so I do.
Fine, thank you. All right, Dean Banfield, I'm the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, and I'm the Chair of what's called the Guideline Subcommittee, which is really just a superset of our organization. Without Tom here, I don't really know exactly how his description was going to go. I think we have a couple of slides.
Sorry, he's having a little bit of a sneeze.
No problem. Okay, so our Guideline Subcommittee set a preliminary guideline back in October. We then met on multiple occasions with all the three budgeting entities which present operating budgets to the town. Our initial guideline was then revised. I don't have hard copy in front of me, so I'm sorry to have to step out in front just to make sure I don't misquote my numbers here. Our guidelines for town government are, what am I doing here? Doing the best I can, given that I don't have it in front of me. Our guidelines for town government are to increase the operating budget by $1,071,000. That's a 4.42 percent increase over the prior year. This is an increase over our preliminary guideline, and after discussion, we upped our preliminary guideline from 4.13 percent to 4.42 percent. We started with a preliminary guideline for the public schools of $1 million increase at 2.61 percent. The schools brought us information, and we did not see fit to raise that, and we stayed with our number at 2.61 percent, a $1 million increase for the public schools. For the region, we really try to provide a guideline for our operating assessment. This does create, you know, some kind of harmony or disharmony between our, the raise that we get and the raise that Carlyle receives. In this particular year, Carlyle's going to see a larger increase just because of the shifting in student populations. They will see a slightly higher increase this year. Last year, we saw a significantly higher increase than Carlyle did. But this year, we work very hard with the region to understand their debt position, their relationship with Moody's, which is, they're getting some information from Moody's which shows that they're going into a negative state due to high debt, due to their drawdowns of their cash reserves, something called excess and deficiency. That's the formal term for the cash reserves that the region has, and they've been drawing money out of that at significant rates that alarms Moody's to the point where there's some negative impact to that, which there, you know, there may be a future bond rating decrease if we don't manage that carefully. So, in consultation, we went from a 4.27 percent increase recommendation at the preliminary state to 4.44. We added some money in to make sure that the cash reserve position for the region was being managed well. So that's, those are our recommendations. I think we have one more slide, is that true? So I want to move on to, I want to step back over here because I think this, yeah, there we go. All right, what you see in front of you is something that we have been faced with for several years. I've been on the committee now for three years, and each year, we sort of look at these sorts of lines, and they do alarm us. The lower set of lines that you see are a number of macroeconomic indicators. At the bottom is the rise of CPI. The next one up is the rise of a five-year Treasury note bill. The next one up is something that's called an Employment Cost Index, which is really generated from something called the National Compensation Survey. I believe it's a subdivision of the Bureau of Labor Statistics. These are very regionalized. We're not talking about some national number that's just for everybody and includes, you know, other places. This is for places as narrow as Middlesex County, or, you know, the eastern side of Massachusetts. So these are very regionalized numbers. The blue line is the 10-year Treasury bill rate. And the orange line that you see climbing well above all of that is the increases in our taxes. And this is something that's being, we've been studying this and taking note of it at the FinCom for several years, and it does alarm us. So what we're proposing to do in this year is establish a forward-looking guidance for the town to try to bend that cost curve and keep it a little bit more in line with some of the other metrics that we see that have to do with our ability to pay, our citizens' ability to stay in their homes, to afford to live in town, our ability to attract and allow employees of the town to actually live here. That goes to our emphasis this year on affordable housing, which is a different initiative, but it's part of a problem that we are really facing, which is our taxes are really outstripping some of the other capacity of the town residents to pay the taxes. So we're proposing a different kind of guidance metric, a guidance metric that will help our town and its budgeting entities plan for longer-term commitments that they make. We're going to call it a sustainable rate of tax growth. And so, we've decided, over the course, we've held a public hearing, we've consulted with ourselves, we looked at whatever kind of metrics we think are valid, and we're trying to come up with a planning metric, we're calling the Sustainable Tax Growth Rate, that we can deliver to the town, we can try to get some kind of buy-in from the budgeting entities to try to bend this cost curve to something that's more affordable for residents to sustain. Right now, the number that we're looking at would be about 2.95 percent for the next several years, as opposed to the rates that we've been going up. That number is now being generated by a combination of the lower number, the CPI, and the 10-year T-bond. So, that's where we are with this. We expect to bring one warrant article this year at town meeting, which will encourage, which will require the FinCom to generate this kind of planning model on an annual basis. Right now, we have a requirement to generate a, what's called a five-year tax projection. We've been doing that since the citizen petition article was passed eight years ago, nine years ago. That's been helpful. It doesn't seem to resonate too much with the residents. We don't seem to get much play with it, but it's always in our financial report that we produce. This new metric is not a backward-looking metric, it's a forward-looking metric to try to help the town to plan for any commitments that they're making, which are multi-year commitments. These include leases, bonding, labor contracts, all kinds of things where, when they come back to town, and every year, they'll come back to our guidance meetings, and they'll say, "Well, we've already made this commitment, so that's not movable. That's part of, that's already baked in the cake." And these are the kinds of things that we want to help them to look forward to and understand what's doable for the residents. So, I'm just introducing this, we're going to have a warrant article, we expect, that will just require the FinCom in future years to generate this kind of five-year planning metric to help the town understand what the residents can sustain. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Excellent job of filling in. Our next is the Finance, Finance Director, Carrie Lefair. We're going to do questions at the end.
[inaudible]
Well, whenever the end is.
The article that I have to present this morning is the establishment of a new OPEB trust fund, and this would be to adopt Mass. General Law Chapter 32b, Section 20. Oh, I do have the clicker, okay. Good, okay. So just by way of background, in 2008, the Massachusetts Legislature, upon a petition submitted by the Concord Town Meeting, approved a special act to establish an OPEB trust fund. Back in 2016, the Legislature revised existing Mass. General Law, which allowed for the establishment of these trust funds. So when Concord established the trust fund in 2008, there wasn't state legislation that allowed for that to happen. But since that time, there have been changes in Gatsby pronouncements which have caused, or which have called into question whether or not the trust fund that we established in 2008 is legally sufficient to meet requirements today. And the specific issue that we have is that, with the legal definition, that the, we want to make sure that the funds in the, or the assets in the fund are able to be, to be able to offset the existing liability. So we don't want to have a question about that. So the solution that we're proposing, based on the recommendation of the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, the town auditor and town council, is that we ask town meeting to adopt this new section of Mass. General Law. So one consideration is that this section of law requires that a trustee or board of trustees be established, and that was not something that was included in our original petition. And the state law identifies how the, whom, from whom you can consider. So you could either have a single trustee or a board of trustees. If you choose to have a single trustee, the statute says that trustee is the town treasurer. If you choose to have a board, your choices are either the local retirement board, or a new board established with five to 13 members, and the statute prescribes who is on that So the recommended option, and this, we're a little early in the process, but we see the recommended option to be, to have a single trustee, which again, would be the town treasurer, who would work with and have a formal reporting requirement to an existing board. That seems to be the most reasonable way to handle this. So in formulating this recommendation, the following boards were consulted, all of whom are in support, and I'm being a little generous because I know we don't have formal votes by all of these boards yet, but the Select Board, the Financial Audit Advisory Committee, and the Trustees of Town Donations were presented with this proposal, and there seems to be general consensus, again, without a formal vote yet, that the reporting should go to the town of trustees. And one final piece of information, I think we would also be recommending that the town, either through the town manager, or the Select Board, or both, draft an OPEB agreement, which at a minimum would set forth the powers, duties, and limitations of the trustee.
Thank you.
Can I just take questions on the previous?
No, because I think we'll get bogged down, and I want to get through it. We have a schedule, we're on it now, 10:45 is questions and answer.
Okay. Agreed.
Good morning, I'm Chris Whalen, Town Manager. I live at 1935 Main Street, and I apologize to the Board that you don't have a monitor here to see, so I know it's difficult. Let me see, concerning the town operating budget, I also can't see. The Finance, as Mr. Banfield mentioned earlier, the Finance Committee has allocated $1,071,000 for town government operations, which is 4.42 percent. That's an increase from the preliminary guideline of $1 million, so I'm pleased that they were able to set that amount of funds aside. What that will fund is a 2.5 percent cost of living adjustment for town employees, including all union employees, including retroactive pay for any contracts that haven't been settled. But the cost of, what I think is a modest 2.5 percent COLA increase, plus any step increases employees might be entitled to, and according to our scales, is $950,000. So that consumes the bulk of the additional money that would be provided next year compared to the current year. The Finance Committee Guideline Subcommittee mentioned, they added some additional funds, which they thought, they don't designate how the funds could be spent, but they said that if you, with additional money, you could also provide the full funding for the Sustainability Director, whose office is in the upper level here, Kate Hanley. In her first year, she only spent about two-thirds of her, or 60 percent of the budget was needed because she was hired late in the year, but we have to make up that, there was a special article, so it wasn't built into the budget, it was voted by town meeting, so we have to build that Sustainability Director position into the budget, and this gets the second half of her salary into the budget. The School Resource Officer was adopted at a special town meeting in September for the current year, and that person has been assigned to the middle school. We now need to build that gradually into the operating budget using some funds from the community chest, and some funds from the Muse Stabilization Fund. But some general fund support will be required for that in the coming year. I propose two new park maintenance staff positions to maintain our existing parks that could use that additional support, as well as the White Pond land donation, which has not been consummated, but we hope it happens in December, January, within the next month or two, as well as the Giraud property. We're in the process of designing improvements on the Giraud land, and once those improvements are completed and the public is joyfully using the park, it will need some maintenance and care. FinCom sets some funding aside for one of those two positions that was requested. And then the White Pond Beach operation, we hope these funds aren't needed, we hope that the beach eventually becomes self-supporting, but in September, excuse me, on the October 1st, a special town meeting, funds were donated for the current year to get the White Pond Beach up and running, starting on Memorial Day, and this would do the same thing next year. That was $30,000, this is 20. We're planning to be diminished each year so that no general fund support is required at White Pond, but we're requesting funds to get the beach operation up and running in the first three years. So that's what I would include in the operating budget with the resources provided. There are some things I want to identify for you, which I will be discussing with the Select Board Monday evening, that are not included, that have been requested by town departments or myself, that are not included in that guideline budget. The Fire Department is seeking four new firefighters to staff the ambulance in West Concord 24/7. Five years ago, six years ago, we, six years ago, Tom, six years ago, the town first staffed a second ambulance in West Concord. For all years prior to that, the ambulance operated out of the Walden Street headquarters of the fire station with just two dedicated staff. Six years ago, we brought in a new ambulance and staffed it, that West Concord ambulance currently is staffed seven days a week, but only 12 hours, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and it has been for six years. But there, and we capture about 70 percent of the demand in West Concord with that hourly pattern, but about 30 percent of the call for medical services in West Concord are not met with that West Concord ambulance, instead, the ambulance is coming from Walden Street. So we, our plan was to fully staff the ambulance after five years. I didn't think last year that we were in a position to do that, so I'm recommending this year that we go ahead and staff the second ambulance 24/7, beginning on July 1st. Using, the total cost is $240,000 for those firefighters, the salary cost would be that. We have some funds remaining in the Muse stabilization, that was a million dollars, that when the Muse apartments were built, they allocated a million dollars to support public safety measures for West Concord. So we use those funds and spent down from the million to about 650 is the balance currently to get those first, that first ambulance staffing going, and we're proposing to use a portion, perhaps another third, of the funds that remain to staff the second, these additional firefighters. But it will require about $90,000 this year from the town in the general fund additional, and over a three-year period, additional 90 next year, and additional 90 the year after that, in order to ramp up the general fund support for that full staffing of the ambulance and diminish the Muse stabilization fund. I hope that is understandable. We have, we're also proposing a receptionist in the town manager's office and in the HR office. This office is quite busy. The Assistant Town Manager has taken over the Public Information Officer support, the Sustainability Director, both of whom operate in this office, as well as the Minuteman Media Network, the PEG Television Access Program, is all operated out of here. All the calls for all of those new staff come here, as well as increased demand for HR services related to those operations and others. And we're finding that it's hard for the two existing town manager staff to handle all of those calls. The staffing in the town manager's office hasn't changed in the 25 years that I've been here. So that's something that I'd like the Select Board to consider. The information technology support at the library and the PD, we think that we need, those are two departments that are on the cutting edge of technology and can't really rely on either a police officer who does IT on the side, or a librarian who does IT on the side, to really keep them current with all the new technology that's coming online. So we think we need a dedicated IT person assigned to those two departments to keep them current. Second park maintenance person, I mentioned that earlier, I think we really need two people in order to maintain our existing parks, as well as Giraud, the Giraud land on Com Ave, and the White Pond, as well as the Rideout, which was expanded a couple of years ago, a few years ago. There's a lot of parks, the demand for the parks, and it's a challenge to keep up and maintain them at the quality that we think the community wants. Senior services are continuing to see increased demand, and we would, that funding would be, is not quite what the department requests, but would provide some additional outreach, workers to work with seniors that have needs of a variety of natures, as well as to fully operate our third van. We do have three Council on Aging vans, we don't have quite enough money to operate those to the level people would like to see happen. Capital equipment should increase every year. Our plan, our policy calls for, as the budget increases, our spending for both debt service and capital equipment should increase as well, so that we're not spending all of our funds on personnel, that we are actually setting additional money aside for vehicles, computers, other capital should increase as well, and there's certainly a demand for that. So, on Monday evening, the Board and I will discuss whether the warrant article that I prepare with the town manager's budget should adhere to the FinCom guideline you've just heard about, or would the Board consider requesting additional funds of town meeting beyond that, which if the full amount is requested, it would be the 1.414 that you see there, or 5.9 percent. That is high, I think that's encouraging Mr. Banfield to pursue his discussion of how we limit the budget increases, but I think those are needs that the community would like to see addressed, and so we have to find that balance between what we can afford and what we need. A few words on the debt plan, so the items in yellow are the things listed under my presentation this morning, and then the rest of the thing is the entire capital plan. So each year, we allocate 5 percent of our total operating budget for debt service, so that we can issue debt for major capital projects. And as you can see at the bottom, this year, we have about $4.8 million available to support funding for debt projects. We're proposing therefore, the renovation of town buildings, we began, we've always had an allocation of funds to fix a roof in one building or another, we've done it building by building up until last year. Last year was the first year, we asked for a broad request to allow us to broadly use, the school department has been doing this for many years, with funding of capital improvements for schools, and they decide, based on what the most urgent needs are, which school building will get those repairs. And I'm requesting the same thing, that we have roofs that need to be replaced, renovations that need to take place, heating systems that need to be updated, and $500,000 is requested to improve the building inventory that we have. Improvement of public parks with the acquisition of the Giraud property and the donation, generous donation from the White Pond Associates of the White Pond land, will need some improvements in both of those areas. We haven't defined exactly how that would be split up, we will do so at town meeting, but we're, in order to fully utilize the properties that we've acquired, we want to invest and make the resources available to the public. Acquisition of open space, a modest amount of funds, this amount of money, $100,000, will be combined with this Community Preservation Act funding to support the purchase of the Emerson land adjacent to the east of the police station, and near the Ice House there is some land that the Emerson Association owns, which they are offering for sale. It's not buildable land, so this would be an open space acquisition, and that will be discussed at town meeting. And then you'll hear later this morning about the roads and the school improvements. So that's the operating and debt plan. We also expect an article to be proposed this spring for the transfer of a portion of the Giraud land for affordable housing. Last spring, town meeting voted to acquire seven acres at 369 Commonwealth Avenue. That acquisition was completed in July. The vote included an allowance of up to one unit of affordable housing. The Housing Authority has sent the Board, the Select Board, a letter saying they would like to have that land transferred to them, so they could use that to develop an additional unit of public housing, which would be immediately adjacent to one of their existing units. This map shows the Giraud land, it's a preliminary concept, and the proposed, Commonwealth Avenue is on the far right. is on the far right and right at the intersection of the driveway accessing the Giraud property is the proposed lot that would be transferred for affordable housing. This is, shows it a little bit closer up, it's that last structure toward the middle of the, middle of the screen. That's a, that house doesn't exist at the moment, but that's a location where a house could be located with minimal impact on the park, but easy access to the park, the pond, the rail trail is right there, biking access to downtown, so we think it would be, and the second, the second house from the bottom is the existing Housing Authority house that is currently public housing. So that's why the Housing Authority would be interested in getting the lot immediately next to them. But in order to, for that to happen, town meeting has to authorize the Select Board to transfer a portion of the Giraud land for that purpose. And records, also on the agenda for me to mention is that we're looking at the Records and Management Bylaw. The town adopted the Records Management Bylaw in 1990. The new Mass Public Records Law, which took effect in January of 2017, changed dramatically the obligations of municipalities and other public entities to produce public records and maintain and archive public records. It has a central role for the town clerk, referred to as the municipal clerk in the statute. The Records Management Bylaw should be updated to conform to the new state law. Currently, it says that the Select Board, Board of Selectmen will appoint an employee of the library to be the municipal archivist, and we really think that that person should report to the town clerk. So we would like to, at least at a minimum, change that provision that requires the municipal archivist to be a library employee to instead to be probably working out of the town clerk's office, spending time at the library where the archives are located, but not necessarily a library employee. Unrelated is the acceptance of, proposed acceptance of Master General Law's Chapter 54, Section 16A concerning election vacancies. The town clerk has over the years often experienced difficulty with election workers. They do get paid, but they're essentially volunteers, we're grateful for their willingness to work for relatively low pay, sometimes all day to work at the polls. Sometimes they get sick unexpectedly or have commitments, other commitments come up and they're unavailable to us. And the law currently is that the Select Board must appoint election workers and often the board doesn't meet in a timely manner. So the Municipal Modernization Act wisely empowers the towns that accept this statute to let the town clerk, the municipal clerk designate people to serve as election officers in the unfortunate situation where somebody can't be available to work. So we'd like the town to consider accepting that statute as well. And that's the end of my.
Thank you, Chris. Eric Clodger, Minuteman Vocational Technical School.
Saturday's a regular workday for me, so I really appreciate having this early slot on the agenda here. I will be leaving when it's, when I'm done.
Make sure you're close to the mic, so.
I will be leaving when I'm finished and will watch the rest on rebroadcast on cable. So this is my eighth year on the Minuteman School Committee and it will be my last. So if there is somebody out there who is interested in, and perhaps getting in touch with me or the Board of Selectmen, who would be the appointing authority, be happy to answer questions, discuss the issues, the history and the outlook in more detail than I'm ever going to do at a public hearing. And my contact information is on Minuteman's website. If you don't, if you don't know my number by heart. All right. Last year, we broke ground, prepared the site and laid the foundations for the new This year, the building will be weather tight within a week or so now, despite the difficult weather conditions of the fall. And interior finishes are underway and we are on schedule and on budget for our planned opening in September of the next school year. Last year, we regained a Level 1 status from DESI based on students' MCAS scores. This year, Minuteman was awarded Blue Ribbon Status by the U.S. Department of Education based on standards that go back to 1983, and this is based on overall student performance. It's one of only three schools in Massachusetts this year and one of only two vocational schools in the entire country to be so honored. Last year, we had seven post grads from member communities and others from out of district join our high school students in their regular day programs, seeking certification for professional or building trades. This year, we have been approved by DESI for four post-secondary vocational programs and will begin operating as the Minuteman Institute. When these are accredited, they can't be accredited until they've run for a year. When they are accredited, they will be eligible for financial aid in a number of programs. The programs themselves have been selected based on market demand and include in this first go-around, advanced manufacturing, culinary, electrical and metal fabrication. Those are the trades where employers, builders, et cetera, are having the hardest time finding qualified workers. Last year, the town of Belmont was on a path to withdraw from the Minuteman District. They had a three-year plan that made them not responsible for debt on the new building. This year, a task force appointed by the Belmont Superintendent has recommended reversal of that decision. We don't know how it'll turn out. Belmont has recently approved a $295 million project to build a new school for their 7 to 12. It does not include any vocational training spaces. And if they decided to reverse that, it would be a change in the regional agreement and any, I can't imagine that they would be allowed to come back in without carrying a full share of the capital debt. The town of Watertown is also seriously considering joining the district. They are currently underway with a feasibility study to replace their high school and have, although the signals look good at this point, that they would wish to join. And they have sent a significant number of kids on out-of-district basis. They want to postpone making a decision on that until they have the results of their feasibility study back. Last year, reuse of the current building site was limited to basic playing fields and some parking. That was a budget consideration, just trying to squeeze everything into the allotted funds. This year, special legislation has been passed, which would allow Minuteman District to enter into long-term, it could be land lease, it could be shared facilities, which the use is consistent with the educational purposes and mission of Minuteman. Further, the legislation requires that the positive proceeds of any such arrangement would be directed to reduce the debt assessment to our member communities. Also, I was wanting to say, oh, so far, we are talking with the town of Lexington, which would be about development of additional recreational facilities. There's also some very preliminary discussion of perhaps a community college satellite, which would allow, make it even easier for kids to do cross-enrollments than they do Okay, now switching to some numbers. Lots of good news, but now we have to get serious. This is the history of Concord's enrollment at Minuteman. You can see, there's been a whole lot of change. Now, six of the other member communities have seen recent changes, increases, positive changes in their enrollment. A few have fluctuated a little bit, not major changes. We also have seen simultaneously reductions in the number of out-of-district kids because of changes in regulations at the DESI level, that we are much more restricted on who we can even consider an application from. I won't go into a lot of detail there, but the mix of in-district and out-of-district has, as a result, shifted some. Also, if people remember, when we reached agreement on the new, or the current regional agreement, we instituted a four-year rolling average of enrollment in use, which is used to calculate the assessment share for a community for the operating budget, and it is a piece of the formula that determines our share of the capital debt. So our, what could have been some really sharp ups and downs have been tempered. We have a much smoother curve in terms of Concord's share of the overall assessment. And there is the percentage that I was talking about. It also, by the way, because we are a slightly larger percentage of the overall in-district enrollment, we have a little bit stronger weight of our vote. Okay. So what does all of this mean? Our operating budget, and this is very preliminary, we are really just getting going on the meat of our budget. We're meeting on Thursday night with the senior management department heads to look at their specific requests and put that in context. Historically, what we've shown here at this, at this meeting in December, has been moderated, cuts have been made, hard decisions, hard choices, and the final assessment to our member communities is lower than what we have shown here. I can't guarantee that that's going to be the case, there are a lot of moving pieces going into this cycle, but that has been the trend. So, operating up, prior capital debt is actually down, paying off some older work. Some of that actually is site work, some of that is the feasibility study that was done, and part of it has to do with some energy improvements that were made several years ago and are nearly paid off at this point. We're projecting a slight decrease in net stated. Chapter 70, we expect will go up a little bit, but the transportation reimbursement because of fewer in-district, the change in the number of communities has changed our transportation plan and therefore, you know, when they're reimbursing a percentage, that would drop a little bit. And I talked about the decrease in tuition from out-of-district students. Our policy has been, because the money is collected this year but paid over the course of the year, is to appropriate the majority of that tuition to the following year's budget. And we were doing that the same. So the, a small amount of the current year tuition, pretty steady at $400,000, but a slight drop in the appropriation of prior year tuition. And our projected excess and deficiency allows a stable number there. Capital fee, here it says not yet. If you recall, we had a major victory with DESI when we were approved, and other districts can do it now under similar circumstances, to charge out-of-district sending communities a capital fee, which will be very similar to what we pay per student for our share of the capital fee. It will be collected next school year. We weren't allowed to put it in until kids are, we can't charge them for use of the building until the building is actually there and the students are in it. We will collect the capital fee starting in the FY '20 school year, but it will be applied to the capital debt paid in FY '21, which is by the way, when we will hit, you know, the ceiling, the high number on that. And there you see, the, our share of the capital, when you see that number, just over a million dollars, that includes $300,000 of capital and about $700,000 of operating assessment, which as I said, historically has dropped by the time we get to town meeting, but I don't know for sure right now. And that is that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much too.
I'll just add, the Select Board has on a couple of occasions had the opportunity to go over and review the facility, extraordinary facility. It's been constructed on time and on budget, and at the time of steel tariffs, being on budget is fairly extraordinary. They had the foresight to purchase the steel necessary before the tariffs went in. Otherwise, we would have been talking about millions of dollars of extra funding. So Kerry has done an extraordinary job on behalf of the town, I think we all owe her an enormous amount of thanks. Next is Laurie Hunter with the School Superintendent Report.
Good morning. Good morning, thank you. So we're glad to be here this morning. I will preface all of my comments by saying we are very much in the throes of the budget process. We've had a number of meetings, both at the School Committee and Finance Committee level, so we'll give you status updates as we go. The coming meetings in December will ultimately decide some of the direction of where these articles are going. So I just want to open by stating our status of a little bit of uncertainty with final decisions. Prior to getting into the numbers, I want to talk on the process we've used this year. Jared Stanton is our new Director of Finance and Operations, and with his entry and a commitment that I made over the course of last year's budget process, we embarked on a zero-based budget approach to build FY '20. And we have literally started from scratch with every single cost driver across both budgets. And through that process, we were able to identify savings, most significantly on the CPS budget, because the regional budget's been so tight for a longer period, the sort of by default, we had started to do more zero-based over the last number of years. We've also been doing a lot of reorganization and looking at how we're operating, looking for efficiencies. We've reviewed all of our cost centers and that work is still ongoing. Especially noteworthy is our work in special education, which is such a significant portion of our budgets next to the salaries, that our work here is to really look at how our services are being provided, what we can make available for students in-district versus the costly out-of-district placements, and try to do best by kids to keep more of them here in Concord. So all of that work has led to where we are today in terms of the numbers. So looking at the CPS operating budget, we have a superintendent's recommended budget of $39,390,163. The School Committee will vote on that budget in December. If we look at what that means, we've actually, through the savings and reorganization processes, been able to offset a lot of our increases for this year and have successfully brought in a recommendation to the School Committee of a budget increase at 2.99%. And I'll loop you back to the Finance Committee comments at the beginning of the discussion and we're really proud of this budget and what we were able to do, and hope it indicates our commitment to sustainability over time. This is a level service budget essentially. We've included just one FTE increase of a custodian at Sanborn to just help support the two middle school buildings, which is going to be a theme that comes up in the next few articles. But overall, it's a, it's a level service budget and so we're really proud of what we brought in here. When we met with the Finance Committee the other night on Thursday, the vote was, as you saw, 2.6 guideline initially, and they maintained that. So we right now have $143,000 delta between the recommended budget and the guideline. That will be what the School Committee considers on December 11th. Our next article that we will be discussing relates to the middle school. We are anxiously awaiting results from our MSBA resubmission. You'll remember a year ago this time, we heard from them that we had not been invited into the program. The direction from them very clearly was to resubmit. They've confirmed that our need is valid, they've been out to the sites and confirmed that what we report is what they see, and it... it really is a matter of how the pool plays out for this year. So, the way MSBA operates is off of a 1% income out of the state sales tax dollars for a total of about $550,000 to $600,000 annually, and it is all about whoever else applies and your need compared to those others in the pool. And the example they continue to give me is that if a large district applies needing significant subsidy, like a Lowell High School, they may receive up to 200-something million, and then pretty quickly, you've dipped into that 550,000 to 600,000. We are due to hear, when I say imminently, I mean, we had hoped we'd heard, would have heard last week. They meet on the 12th of December and should be making their recommendations then, so typically, the districts notice, are noticed prior to that. So, the School Committee is going to be talking on this article in their December meetings as we learn the status of that statement of interest. I'll just finally comment, our needs at the middle schools continue to grow. I think a year in, the new principal and I are much more aware of the impact of not only the status and physical structures of the two schools, but the two-school configuration and the challenges that that brings us. We are not able to provide programming in the way that we wish we could, and it becomes very frustrating and challenging over time. Those are learning environments that offer us a lot of needs. And then there's the physical plant itself. We are always looking to maintain and make it the best learning environment possible, which you're going to hear about in a minute when we get to the capital proposals for this year, but it's an unknown entity at every minute. Yesterday, we had a septic issue and are actively cleaning that as we speak. So, it's, the unpredictability is one of our biggest challenges, in addition to the impact it has on education on a daily basis. This is, this is a little bit of housecleaning mostly, our request for this revolving account. When we rent out the use of the schools, which is a fairly typical unexciting process, right now, there's no structure for us to receive those rental incomes. They are going to the town's general fund and usually ultimately to free cash. So, we're hopeful that we would be afforded the opportunity for those funds to come directly to the schools, and that we might be able to use them to offset the capital needs, and obviously, the use of the schools brings further capital needs. So, we're hopeful that that might be considered, and I'll apologize now for that floating apostrophe that landed in the wrong place. As to the FY '20 CPS capital budget, and you remember in the earlier slides from the other presenters, there's $900,000 annually allocated typically, somewhere in that ballpark. And so, we've been working with the School Committee. Last week, we brought them our five-year extensive capital plan for all of the buildings, probably the most extensive plan that's been done in a number of years to really try to project out current needs and future needs. And so, what we've really focused on this year are really streamlining and identifying urgent topics. Among them this year is our phone system. We are in a very outdated phone system that every time something happens, we're hopeful we can get parts for it. It is unreliable. We have a line that Verizon maintains and refuses to help seal up, so moisture doesn't affect it. So, every time it rains, we're pretty much without reliable phone service. It's an urgent need, so this needs to be addressed in this $900,000. And that's the K-8 structure, the pre-K-8, including Ripley. The high school's a different discussion, thankfully. That was addressed in the new school bill. That's about $185,000, $200,000 requests, so that's a significant portion of the $900,000. The other uses of this will be for minor security upgrades to the elementary and middle schools, to make sure that we're feeling comfortable, we have adequate camera coverage, and that the principals can observe what's going on in the space outside of the schools, within the schools. Right now, we're literally with one camera at most of those buildings, with the exception of Alcott, just so they can see the front door, and there's nothing additional. So, we're looking to do that in this day and age. It's an important tool for us and something we think is a priority. The remainder of the funds, we would like to target to the middle schools, and I think we want to be sure we explain why. We understand, at the same time we talk, we need a new school. It's probably at least four to five years out, right? Even if we get into the new MSBA right now, there's a four-year build process to happen. The current setting needs attention, and the kids that are there are only going to be afforded one opportunity at their middle school education. So, we're looking at some minor upgrades, but overall, we'd really like a facelift of paint, rugs, a little bit of restructuring, so the spaces are more accommodating to the purposes that we have. And so, we're hoping that that can be supported. If we wait to do it, it makes less sense, knowing that we are hopefully heading towards a new building, so to do it now would upgrade the space to get us through until, hopefully, there's a consideration for a new school. So, that's essentially all of the CPS articles that we're going to be talking about. Switching to the region and the high school. Right now, we've proposed an operating budget totaled $34,909,657. Concord's share of that, as proposed, would be $20,163,872, with a debt assessment of $3,300,000 and some. Debt assessment continues to decrease because of where we are in the funding structure and borrowing of the new school, so that's exciting and positive. We'll be reviewing all of this in December. When we met with the Finance Committee, the guideline, as you saw in the earlier slide, was increased from 4.27% for Concord to 4.44%. In the budget that we've proposed to the School Committee, it was at 5.31% for Concord. So, that right now is a delta overall of, and I want to make sure I stress this, $221,000 overall. The number that was referenced earlier, the delta for the Concord difference between what we've proposed and the guideline is $166,000. It's important, let me stay on this one. It's important to talk a little about the status of the regional budget. We've done the same zero-based approach here and found moderate savings that are helping to offset some of the increases. The ongoing issue has been the use of, is the revenue discussion. We've been drawing out of our excess and deficiency fund, which is essentially our free cash that we're required to have, such that we are well under the 4% or so of the total operating budget that you'd want in that account. We're looking right now to be certified at 2.7%. And that's because in this year's budget, and for prior years, similar trends of using $650,000, $700,000 out of that account as a revenue source. So, you see the issue, one-time funds feeding an operating budget is not a pattern you want to continue. So, that has led to Moody's and their triple bond rating. The feedback we received this fall was that we were going to be put on a negative outlook, meaning they were watching more closely. Ultimately, they're looking at our debt on the high school and our ability to have reserve funds, and seeing some concerning patterns there. So, they've, they've really had a great impact on this budget discussion and our use of E&amp;D. So, in the budget that we proposed, we have cut almost in half the use of E&amp;D as a revenue source, with the goal of that, weaning off of that completely in the next two to three years, so that we can restore E&amp;D at a healthy fund and leave it as a stable reserve the way that it's supposed to be. So, I think the question at the School Committee level the next two weeks will be what we do with E&amp;D with this kind of a delta in the guideline. OPEB is another discussion, because you remember, the regional budget includes all of these moving variables that the CPS budget does not. Health insurance, we have to absorb that increase annually. And so, now we're trying to figure out, what, what set of numbers are we going to come to, to consider the guideline? We've been talking extensively with Carlisle this fall. Direct feedback from them has been to prioritize E&amp;D over OPEB, and that will be based on the feedback we've received from Moody's, that they value E&amp;D more than OPEB. And so, all of those will be the ongoing conversations in December, as the Committee decides whether to go to the guideline, how to work with E&amp;D and OPEB, and what mix and match of all of that is going to be our final decision. I think I want to just stress, the zero-based process that we ran is allowing this to be the conversation instead of services and programs, and of course, that was ultimately our priority. The capital article, I feel like I smile when I bring capital articles into this room, because it's been an interesting journey the last year. We are actively working on the feasibility study that you remember. We had put a special town meeting article forward that we did not move because we funded it within the operating costs. That was back this fall. So, that study is actively underway, and we are awaiting a report from them imminently in the next two weeks as to reference costs that we can use to inform this article, and the projects that they are considering are paving of the BD road, the Loop Road in front of BD. Parking is on the request list, that they're looking to see what space might be available for that and give us some potential options. The amenities building that would include the restroom, by code, we need permanent restrooms down at Memorial Field that are not currently there. So, we're asking them to give us feedback on that. There's a whole saga to that about how the code works with the stadium, and we're going to be trying to not have to put in 45 bathrooms for a stadium that's used 10 times a year, so that's, piece of that discussion. And then finally, some of the wish list items that down the road may be even funded privately in terms of a track or some of the other ideas of how that might fit. What the feasibility study's going to do is inform us as to whether all of those options are viable options, are they complementary to each other, and allow us some discussion points with the town, given our challenges with bylaws of impervious surface and our definite need to be concerned about water runoff, given the public well that's so imminently close to the campus. So, all of that is going to play out with some quick pace to it over the next two weeks, and the School Committee will be deciding what to go into this article, what those priorities are for FY '20, so that we can propose that. And so, that's the summary. Thank you.
Kerry Ackerman, the Community Preservation Committee.
Aha, that looks right. Good morning. This is a brief overview of the Community Preservation Committee. If you go to the next slide. Ah, perfect. Great. Okay. So, just very briefly, 1.5% possible surcharge out of the possible legal 3% that were allowed. So, there's a 1.5% surcharge on the tax bill that goes to community preservation, with three possible exemptions that I won't go into right now, and these locally raised funds are matched by the state. This year, we happily saw an increase in state aid go up to 19%. It used to be 100% way back, then it went way down. We estimated 10%, so at least we're getting a 19% match. This year, we have, we had requests of 2.7 million. Right now, some of those requests have been revised, and we're down to 2.2 million in requests, and our total funds are 1.7 million, including some reserves from last year. The way the applications are this year, we have $176,000 in open space being requested, $510,000 in recreation. Open space and recreation, these are projects that qualify for both categories. $655,000 historic preservation, $520,000, and community housing, $319,000. In the community housing area, we have two projects being requested this year for a total of $319,000. The first project is the Regional Housing Services Program. This is a project that funds staff support. Concord is a member of a consortium with eight towns, and our assessment this year is $38,000, of which half are requested from the general fund and half from the Community Preservation Act. The next project, most of you are familiar with by now, is Junction Village. This is the drawings, and the total project is $18 million, with matching funds of $17 million. You'll recall that the town has funded $1 million of free cash in the past, which is part of that $17 million matching funds. Also, the Community Preservation Act has been funding over three years part of Junction Village, so this is going to be the third of three years where we'll be asking town meeting to support $300,000 this year. And the timing on this project is that the developer is going again before the state for the approval, and they go up in February or March, and they will hear by June, and they say if they are approved, they will start construction by early fall. This project will have 83 affordable units, all being assisted living, and 43 of them will be in the deeply affordable level. Our next area is historic preservation. We have two projects being requested for a total of $520,800. The first project being the expansion and renovation of the main library and the connection to the Haywood Benjamin House. This project will cost $10 million, of which $9,500,000 is coming from matching funds. I believe Chris talked about $550,000 of that $9,500,000 coming from the capital fund for furniture, fixtures, FFE, they call it, furniture, fixtures, equipment, that's it. Okay. And CPA funding request is $500,000. And what this project will do, will preserve the historic exterior of the Haywood Benjamin House, which is located on Main Street, and also put in ADA compliance in the bathrooms, ramps, et cetera. Our other historic project is known as the Timothy Wheeler House, located at 110 Walden This house had a historic structures report done, and the next step now is the architectural design. There are matching funds of $11,000, which is mainly going into a roof repair. These funds came directly from the Concord Aging Center, which is the body that runs the Timothy Wheeler House. And the rest of the $20,800 will be spent on architectural drawings. Uh-oh. Okay. Okay, thank you. Well, I think this is where we left off, our next area. These are projects that are eligible for two categories, open space and recreation, for a total of $655,000. We have four of these projects. The first one is the Giraud property, which you've heard a lot about. This is the drawing that Chris showed before. What we're looking at is Phase One of the Giraud project, which will have a total project cost of $300,000. We anticipate in future years, there will be additional requests. Some of the things that might get done here are paved parking areas, paved connections to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, some walking trails, some more trails in the woodland. Water erosion is very important. So, these are some initial developments in the Giraud property. The next project, White Pond. The total project cost is $765,000. The total project cost is 765,000, of which 515,000 are coming from matching funds. And that includes the 300,000 that is being given to the town as a gift. It also, I believe, includes some money from the capital plan. And the rest is 250,000 being requested from the Community Preservation Act. Mostly, this will go toward accessibility improvements. If any of you have been there and seen how steep it is, definitely need some work with the pathways going down to the beach. Also, the bathrooms, there will be some work done to have accessible bathrooms. Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, we've been working on this for quite a few years. We are up to Phases 2C and 2B. And the funding that's being requested is $30,000. This is a contingency type request for items that the state is not paying for. The state is paying several million dollars for the entire project, but there are some things that are not eligible for state funding, such as signage and bike shelters. And that is what this money will go toward. It will be combined with $40,000 that we funded last year. So they'll have a pot of money for contingencies. And then we have the Warner's Pond dredging project. The total cost of this project is going to be 1.9 million dollars over several years. What we're requesting this year in the Community Preservation Act is just $75,000 to do the permitting and get started on this important dredging project. And it's even more important now, Warner's Pond is an asset to the town, but now with the Giraud being located right on Warner's Pond, it's taken on a new urgency. And then we have open space projects for a total of 176,000. The first one is the Emerson Land Acquisition. This is also known as the Emerson-Thoreau-Ambel. It will allow the town to own most of the trail going from the Emerson House to the Walden Pond. The total project cost is 200,000. And the Community Preservation Act is, they're requesting 90,000. The matching funds are 50,000 from the Community Land Trust. And I thought we were going to be requesting 60,000 from the capital fund, but I thought I heard Chris say today that was 100,000? Awesome. So we're going to revise this in a very good way. And yes, as I said, this is a very nice trail if you haven't been on it. Very historic trail also, however, it doesn't qualify for the historic section of the Community Preservation Act. It only qualifies for open space, even though historically, it's a historic trail, only buildings qualify under the act, but we all know in Concord that it's historic. And then we have the Haywood Meadow Stonewall Extension. We have done two previous phases of this, and this will be the last phase. Over to the far top right, you will see a phase done in 2010. On the left, there was a phase done in 2015. And in the middle, on the corner there of Lexington Road, you see the small section that they want to finish up this year that has bollards. And they want to put in the Stonewall to match the rest of the project. The total project cost is 26,919, of which 21,619 is going to be requested from CPA. We also have a request for the Old Calf pasture. And there is a Britton's Violet over on the right. This is the largest area of Britton's Violet in the state of Massachusetts or possibly in the world. So it's definitely something that we want to preserve. The total cost is 17,000. And we have just received notice that we will be receiving $12,000 in matching funds from the Little Women Project. So the CPA request is $5,000. And last, we have one project for recreation, $510,000. This is the Emerson Field Improvements. You might remember last year, this was also a project. This is a very large project that is going to be renovating or rehabbing some wells, doing the underground irrigation system, rehabbing softball fields. The total project cost is 1,020,000. Last year, the matching funds of 510 there include last year's contribution from CPC of 200,000. And so they're looking again this year for 510,000 to be able to do this large project. And finally, we have our usual request for staff and technical support. We need some staffing to put together all these numbers and slides, write all the official letters and conditions and grants. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Teri. We're now Human Resource Department Personnel Board.
So again, I'm not Amy, I'm Ellen Quackenbush, Chair of the Personnel Board. Amy is very sick and called or left a message at midnight last night and saying, can you fill in? So first of all, I have no idea if I have slides. Oh, good. All right. So I think I have all my notes in front of me. And I think the theme here is that the Personnel Board is facing, or the Personnel Department and Personnel Board is facing, a lot of changes in terms of job requirements. Chris gave a great example in terms of IT support. The proposal was potentially to use your librarian or officer to learn IT or to support IT. And that's not really the right way to do it. You really need an IT person that is dedicated to that department. And the town is constantly having the challenge of new needs from the broadband, from the Minnesota Light Plant, from retirees, and just having to change job descriptions to fit needs and also to comply with new regulations. So the idea is that perhaps at this town meeting, but probably at a future town meeting, propose changes to the bylaws and the charter of the Personnel Department of the Personnel Bylaws. So what is it that we do now? Typically, every year, the warrant has two articles that relates to the town's employees' classification and compensation plan. And this is for non-union town employees. And those articles are submitted into the consent calendar typically. And so they, you know, they don't really get a lot of play, they're usually a vote that is non-controversial at town meeting. These class and comp plans establishes the titles, establishes the titles, job descriptions, and salary ranges for about 170 positions created by the town manager. That is actually less than 60% of the town's regular workforce and 15% of the total town and school workforce. It includes positions that are funded by the General Fund, enterprise accounts, grants, and other resources. And typically, they're put onto the consent calendar. So what Amy does, as she looks at market data, she consults with other towns to determine what adjustments should be made, both in job descriptions and in salary, to attract competent people and to retain the people that we have. We are, or rather, Amy says that she is aware that many of our salary ranges remain competitive, but others are less so as the labor market and town pool has been experiencing challenges. And this is probably the most true for IT, broadband, and the light plant. Some employees also feel that we're not competitive because the town's percentage contribution to health insurance is lower than other communities. So maintenance of the comp and of the classification compensation plan has become increasingly difficult through the years. And needs are changing faster and more frequently due to a variety of factors, and Amy notes, including the redesign of positions as long-term employees retire, changes in the types of positions that we have to provide, such as telecommunications, PEG, visitor services, facilities management, and sustainability. The new Massachusetts Equal Pay Act, which is, provides a lot of challenges that Amy has to deal with in terms of comparing job categories that are typically filled by women versus typically filled by men. Not that that's, you know, always the case, but it's the, you have to show that you're paying equivalent in women and men in similarly, you might, in jobs that have similar requirements. And increases in the minimum wage. All this is kind of a changing, shifting quilt that Amy has to consider every year. And so we're, the idea is to take a look at the town charter and personnel bylaws to consider ways that we might increase flexibility and efficiency, mainly, you know, keeping Amy well and not having her sick so often. I think she's way overworked. I don't think, I know she is. She works really long hours and takes her a long time to prepare both for presentations for Personnel Board and to Town Meeting. So it probably makes sense to just at least revisit the priorities that both the Town Meeting has and the Personnel Board has in terms of supporting Amy's roles. So that is what's going to be discussed in the next few months, whether we propose something for this Town Meeting or for our future Town Meetings is still up for discussion.
Thank you very much, and great job filling in. Public Works Commission.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Casey Winslow, Chair of Public Works Commission. And this year, the Public Works Commission is requesting the Town Meeting consider seven articles in total, most of which have been, are fairly routine, have been consistent with those moved in previous years at Town Meeting and placed on the consent agenda. So the first, I don't think I have a screen, no. So I don't have a screen, but you can follow along on your sheet, on your agenda. So the first is the Road Repair Revolving Fund. Self-explanatory. The second is the Solid Waste Disposal Fund expenditures. The third is the Water System expenditures. The fourth is the Sewer System expenditures. And then the Sewer Improvement Fund. So we also have a proposed debt authorization article to be considered, which was previously years also on the consent agenda. This will be for the 2019-2020 road program. The article requests the authorization for borrowing of $1,004,000 for the repair, reconstruction, and renovation of Concord's roadway system, which includes 107 miles of public roads. It's longer than most people think. So this funding allows for the consistent investment of our roadway network to ensure it does not deteriorate to a point where more costly repairs would be necessary. So then, lastly, a second proposed debt authorization article to be considered at the Town Meeting in the amount of approximately 3.5 million funded by the Water Enterprise Fund with no impact to the General Fund and will support a four-year water main replacement plan to complement the proposed road program work. In previous years, water main replacement has been funded year to year without debt funding, due to the larger projects scheduled over the next several years, which include water main replacement in the Prescott/Peter Spring area, which is off of Bedford Street, and the Turning Mills/Silver Hill neighborhoods up at Monument, along with a planned drawdown of the water fund cash balance to address cost escalations related to Nagog Pond Water Treatment Facility. This borrowing is the preferred funding mechanism. And that's the seven articles that we would like Town Meeting to consider.
Come on.
Thank you.
Any more?
Good morning. I'm definitely not Mr. Kleiman, but he was...
I didn't announce it.
I'm Elizabeth Hughes, a town planner. Mr. Kleiman was flying back from South Africa Thursday night, so just not sure what's happened. Listed on the agenda is currently nine zoning bylaw amendments that the Planning Board is considering. They are actually also considering a 10th bylaw that I'll get into. The first one is the Groundwater Conservancy District. Currently, there's a section in the Groundwater Conservancy District that refers to an acre of land for a septic system and limitations in the district. An acre is 43,560 square feet, but under Title V. Title V uses a buildable acre of 40,000 square feet. So the zoning bylaw amendment will actually delete the word acre and put in 40,000 square feet so that they're consistent. The next article is the deletion of the Temporary Marijuana Moratorium. As everybody knows, last April, the town voted not to allow marijuana establishments. So this is a housekeeping item to delete that section of the bylaw. The third deals with non-conforming single and two-family residential structures. Currently, when the Board of Appeals reviews special permit applications, there's certain criteria that the building commissioner has the authority to look at. And included in, included in the zoning bylaw, currently, under one of the criteria, it deals with the expansion of a non-conforming structure by more than 50% is calculated over a five-year period. That's listed under one of the criteria. That's technically not a criteria, it's just an aspect of the bylaw. So the warrant article is to remove it as a criteria and move that language into the actual text of the bylaw. So there's nothing changing to the bylaw, just moving that sentence so that it fits into the wording of the bylaw. The fourth deals with fairs, bazaars, and antique shows. Currently, if one of the schools, Fenn School, Middlesex School, have different events, they're required to get a special permit, Verrel Farm. But in the wording of the bylaw, it also lists municipal uses. And there's no purpose for the town of Concord to get a special permit to hold a municipal event. All municipal events are coordinated through the Select Board, through the town manager's office, through the police chief, picnic in the park, the tree lighting ceremony. So all of these municipal fairs and bazaars and those aspects. So this bylaw amendment would delete the requirement for a municipality to get a special permit for a town-wide event. The fifth deals with an amendment to the Floodplain Conservancy District. Under the National Flood Insurance Program, the town of Concord is required to have a Floodplain Conservancy District that regulates development within the floodplain. And the floodplain is defined by FEMA in the flood insurance rate maps. Those maps get amended at different periods of time. The last amendment was this past February, which was not in time to submit a warrant article. So this amendment would add that February letter of map revision to the text of the Floodplain Conservancy District. Six, I think I'm six, one, two, three, four, five, six, is another housekeeping amendment. The town of Concord adopted a zoning bylaw amendment to allow large ground solar. I'm just looking for the article. That was back in 2012. There's different aspects to the zoning bylaw. There's sections in the bylaw that deal with the text of that warrant article, which is Section 7.9. But then, many times, the text in the zoning bylaw is referenced in the table of uses and where different uses are allowed in the different zone districts and whether they're permitted, not permitted, or permitted by special permit. In 2012, when the town adopted the large ground solar, the table of uses was not amended. So this is another housekeeping item where it will just insert that use into the table and list the requirements for establishment of large ground solar. Seven is... Seven is another housekeeping bylaw. We're trying to get everything up to date. Deals with the requirement under handicap parking currently references the Architectural Barriers Board and the Department of Public Safety, which both of those no longer exist. So the bylaw will now reference the Architectural Access Board for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and delete the Department of Public Safety. Nine is a personal wireless communication overlay district. Last year, there was a citizens petition brought forward to amend the overlay district in the location of Middlesex School. The Planning Board did not have any opportunity to have a conversation about that district because it was a citizens petition. And the Board goes through a very deliberative process. All of these bylaw amendments, they started discussing these in the beginning of August. So the Board did speak with the petitioner, did not recommend that that article be moved, and it was subsequently failed due to a lack of a two-thirds vote. The Planning Board, since August, has been studying this and is putting forth an amendment to the wireless overlay district in the location of Middlesex School. Something that, and the town recently passed the update to our Comprehensive Long Range Plan, and in that plan, it talks about formula business bylaws. There was a lot of discussion regarding this in Concord Center when Cafe Nero's application was being discussed. So the Board is moving forward with a formula business bylaw amendment. Currently, the formula business bylaw is only for West Concord Village and West Concord Business Districts. This bylaw amendment will now include the Concord Center Business. And last one that's not on this list, the Board is looking to do a bylaw amendment to the Table of Uses for the Limited Business Two District. That is a single property district for 59 Walden Street, the old bank that has been vacant for four years. So the Board is discussing, currently, the uses permitted in that district are severely limited to financial and business office, professional offices, and I think educate, and educational childcare and other protected uses, and that's it. So the Board's discussing whether there are other uses in the Table of Uses that would be suitable for that location.
You so much.
You're welcome.
Mark for the Historic District Commission.
Good morning. I'm Mark Giddings, representing the Historic District Commission. We're going to put forth an article at Town Meeting to expand the Main Street Historic District to include the area between Main Street and Sudbury Road, including Academy Lane, Belknap Street, and Middle Street. Sit.
As you can see, we're ahead of time. The schedule's working very well here. Last but not least, we have a citizens petition, moratorium extension, installation of synthetic turf on town land. Ms. Bryant.
Thank you. Not quite so short, I'm afraid. I'm Beverly Bryant, 175 Conan Street, a member of the Committee for Grassfields for Safe Sports and representing the committee. Our article this year is to determine whether the town will extend the current moratorium on the construction or installation of any synthetic turf defined as monofilament carpet with infill and any surface covering of loose fill made from scrap tires on any land of any size owned by the town for a further three-year time period, starting on April the 18th, 2019, and ending on April the 18th, 2022. This moratorium includes Concord Public School land but does not include the Concord-Carlisle Regional High School campus or private land. In 2016, the town adopted a three-year moratorium on the use of synthetic turf on town land because of concerns about the health effects on children of the chrome rubber particles used in synthetic turf. Children are more susceptible to carcinogenic and toxic chemicals than adults, and chrome rubber, which is made from used tires, contains Class I carcinogens and known endocrine disruptors. As well as exposure to chemicals, there have also been complaints of increased injuries on these fields and of children with asthma being unable to use them. There was also concern about the environmental impact of replacing large areas of grass and soil with plastic carpet and ground-up tires. In 2016, various studies were underway to assess the health impacts of synthetic turf. The Environmental Protection Agency had begun a multi-agency federal research action plan to answer questions filed at the EPA by congressmen concerned about the health and safety of people playing on these fields. The EPA report has been delayed and is currently in draft form. Other studies, for example in California and elsewhere, are also still waiting completion. The moratorium expires in April 2019, but it seems that in the last three years, little has changed. Children are still being exposed to toxic chemicals when they play on these fields, and the health effects of this exposure are still not being measured. A number of European countries have put restrictions on the installation of chrome rubber fields as a precaution until there is more scientific data available to resolve questions about their safety. There are also growing concerns about the environmental impact of synthetic turf fields. Chrome rubber particles do not remain in the plastic carpet but are washed out during heavy rainstorms and migrate with the runoff away from the field. Since 3% to 5% of the infill is lost from each field every year, synthetic turf remains a source of pollution for an area extending some distance away from the fields. This can easily be seen in both the Douglas White Fields and the Lower Stadium Field, all of which leach chrome rubber into the surrounding land. The recent awareness about plastics in our environment also leads to concern about the plastic carpet, which holds the chrome rubber particles. This plastic deteriorates over time, leading to the filaments breaking off and migrating from the fields, along with the chrome rubber particles. Concord has adopted four sustainability principles as a response to climate change and environmental pollution. One, reduce dependence upon fossil fuels, underground metals, and minerals. Two, reduce dependence upon synthetic chemicals and other manufactured substances. Three, reduce encroachment upon nature. Four, meet human needs fairly and efficiently. The construction of synthetic turf fields violates these principles because land that was once part of a healthy ecosystem is being replaced by an artificial site that has no ecological value but also bleeds toxic chemicals into the environment. Grass fields that have been built and managed well are durable, retain and redistribute water from heavy rain events, remove carbon from the atmosphere, and add to the health of our climate as well as our children. In conclusion, we are asking the town to adopt another three-year moratorium to allow the ongoing research on synthetic turf, especially by the EPA, to be completed, to protect our children from exposure to untested and toxic chemicals, and to give us time to better assess the environmental impact of synthetic turf fields in a time of changing climate. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now ready, and it's not noon time yet, for questions and comments. Anybody on the Board like to... Very good.
Just very quickly, Ms. Bryant, I just didn't hear the name of the committee.
Grassfields for Safe Sports.
Maybe step to the, yeah, thank you.
Grassfields for Safe Sports.
And whose committee is that?
It's our committee. It's not, it's not a registered town committee, it's an informal committee of citizens.
Just didn't get the name. Thank you.
Mr. Rothmull.
Good morning.
Good to be here before noon. Terry Rothmull, 330 Musketicwood Road. Speaking to the Finance Committee's report. Finance Committee gave a hearing early this calendar year in which tax rates in Concord were compared to CPI. I can't remember what else. My memory, what's changed now is they've taken some regional indices of CPI and other factors. I think if we all go back to Economics 101, we'll know that CPI is made up of many, many factors. Some of the increases or decreases in some of those factors are above the average, some are below the average. CPI is an average. In this case, in comparing tax rates to CPI, for example, we're comparing one component of a CPI consideration to the average. And this might run us into the problem of a rule that says no factor should be above the average in our considerations. I suggest that the Finance Committee find appropriate indices, construction cost indices, labor cost indices as the town faces those costs over time, and produce a chart that will more materially be comparable to our tax rate. I think that's necessary for the town to consider whether we are doing more badly in those components of the CPI or other kind of consideration, or we're doing better or on a par, like we often compare ourselves with neighboring towns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Edward Lerner, 34 Everett Street. I'm the Vice Chair of the Housing Authority Board, and I just want to express our appreciation to the Juro family and the town for coming to an arrangement that we may possibly have additional housing at the Juro Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Carlin Reed, 83 Wits End, and I have a question and a comment about the CPC program. I understand that the public, at the public hearing, we found out that there was a total allocable amount of about $2 million, not $1.7 million. And part of that is a $300,000 left over from the previous allocation. At that time, I pointed that out, saying, well, you have an extra $300,000 that, in theory, you could allocate. And there were two programs that did not have full allocation, one of which was Emerson Field Improvements, and the other which was the Library. So I encouraged the CPC to consider that base allocation. And part of the reason for that is the concern to have enough reserves for next year. That's reasonable. The question I have is, how much base do you really need? And I would encourage that the CPC contact the Finance Group to find out what is a reasonable amount. It is within the CPC's discretion, I never realized that. But it is something that if you have two good projects that are not getting full funded, that that is the consequence of the basic assumptions. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to respond.
Thank you, Carlin. Yes, we are certainly considering that. In that slide there, it did show available funds at $1.7 million. That is because our Finance Director has recommended that we only spend $1.7 million. But technically, we could go up to $2 million. So in that range is what the CPC is considering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
347 Lexington Road. I'd really appreciate the focus on affordable housing in the warrant articles this year. The one thing I would ask is you draft those articles relating to the permit fee and the transfer fee, please structure them in such a way that we can move forward relatively expeditiously. It'll be two years since the first permit fee motion came up at Town Meeting. I want to be sure if there is town support here, and I really hope there is, that we can manage the choreography of going to the legislature without having to go back to Town Meeting once again. So again, it's, in the wording, I hope it's in such a way that with the support of the Select Board, we can move forward expeditiously after Town Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Todd Benjamin, Chair of the Affordable Housing Funding Committee. Again, thank you to the Select Board for taking the time and diligence to review the findings of the committee and to contemplate putting forward some warrant articles at Town Meeting. We stand ready to assist in any way that we can because we agree with the previous speaker in terms of the need for the expeditious and thorough nature of moving something forward at Town Meeting. To that extent, we'd like to understand if there are any hindrances that you see in putting forward these warrant articles as it stands now. It seems like from the presentation earlier today that, one, perhaps two, or there was some ambiguity as to whether or not a warrant article would actually go forward. So we'd like some clarity on that.
I'm not sure about the ambiguity in going forward. The issue that I was trying to articulate is setting aside the free cash allocation, which we don't have the wording of it worked out, but it's going to be sort of kind of like what I said, if you're in the, in the range of 5% to 10%, then a dollar allocation issue would be made. The second one is for the transfer tax and for the building surcharge. The only ambiguity is whether there is a warrant article that essentially the town would say, do this, as opposed to a warrant article that says, we encourage the Select Board, whomever is responsible, to get with the legislature and figure out how it has to get done. There's no ambiguity about going forward, it's just, you know, in the previous speaker, we would propose something that has to get put into code as a law, and if we don't get it right, it just comes back and they say, thanks very much for your try, but perhaps you could do this again next year. So the example of that is, you might recall a few years ago, I forgot in the timetable, when the senior means-tested tax exemption proposal was put forward. When it was first put forward and went in, they just said, you don't have this right. Boom. So a whole year's gone then. So the issue is just whether can we work with the legislature now to figure out, can we get it codified in some language that they go, I don't know whether we'll pass it, but yep, that's a real thing, or whether it just takes longer than that to get the job done. And again, in response to the previous speaker, my suspicion, Chris, maybe you could help me, is even if it, even if we got into the legislature and they went all in favor and said yes, I suspect it has to come back to the town again to be voted, very similar to the tax, tax relief one. It went to the town, then it came back for us to approve again. Is that probably correct? So whether we like it or not, this is going to be a multi-year process, not so much for free cash, but, but for setting up these surcharges and transfer taxes. This is going to be a multi-year process.
Oh, yeah, no, we're aware of that, okay.
So there's no ambiguity of going forward. I think we're committed to that. The question is, how do we go forward most effectively so that we don't get warped into a couple turnarounds with the legislature?
Great, okay, great. Thanks, thanks for the clarification. Thank you.
A technical question for the Select Board from some members of the Community Preservation Committee. We have several projects, as you could see, that have multiple funding sources. And often, one of the funding sources is the Town Capital Plan. We also have a few that are outside agencies. What is the process for determining how many warrant articles we need? For example, we have one main CPC article, and then we have some... we need? For example, we have one main CPC article, and then we have some other funding sources for some of these projects. How does this all... How do we know how many articles we're going to need, and how does that work?
My understanding, and Chris, you might want to answer that, but is that there's one, generally one, warrant article. But Chris has much more experience in this than I do.
Generally, it is one article for all the CPA funding. We have on occasion, when there was a major spending article, half-funded or substantially funded by the capital plan and half-funded by CPA, we had that as a standalone article for that one.
Village was one of those.
So, do you anticipate, for example, the Emerson Land acquisition? We have three funding sources. We have the Capital Plan. We have the Concord Land Trust, which is outside of town meeting. And then we have... Is that going to be part of our main CPC article, or do we just work with you quietly and figure this out?
I think we may want to work with council to figure that out. Again, we have sometimes... For simplicity's sake, it might make sense to put that all into one article, that's one standalone article.
Right. And then we have several other projects like that. So, we don't want to really end up with four or five articles, but you tell us what to do and we'll do it.
We will work it out.
Okay. Thanks.
Could all government work that way? You tell us what to do and we'll do it. Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. Excited about the affordable housing discussion. Wanted to ask two questions. Alice Kaufman, at a select board meeting several weeks ago, asked about a bond issue and wondered whether it was possible to forward a bond issue, and I wondered what your collective thinking has been about that. And it's my recollection that Todd Bland's committee recommended at one point that we find a way of getting our nonprofit organizations in town to fund affordable housing in one way or another, or at least think about participating in this effort a little more vigorously than perhaps they have in the past. And I just wonder what your collective thinking has been about that. Thank you.
Carrie would probably be best equipped to talk about the bond.
Bond. Very good.
We got an opinion from our bond counsel.
On the bond issue, we got an opinion from the bond counsel.
I'm going to let Carrie speak to it more eloquently than I could.
So, I was in touch with bond counsel within the last 10 days or so. We do have a written legal opinion on the ability of the town to borrow and the limitations. So, the short, I guess the short story is, if you're using CPA as a revenue source to issue debt, you have the most wide latitude. You could construct affordable housing either for rental or homeownership. But if you are using other funds, it's more limited, and the affordable housing really needs to be for rental purposes. It's very difficult under the current state statutes to provide general bond obligation funds for homeownership. So, there's an opportunity that the town could partner with the Concord Housing Authority or with an affordable housing trust, but really for rental opportunities. We also inquired about the town using general bonds, general obligation bond issue to purchase property and then put it up for resale to a developer. And there does seem to be some opportunity to do that under certain circumstances, but that could be for homeownership as well.
So, will this... Thank you so much, Carrie. Will the select board perhaps issue as part of their housing, affordable housing warrant, a consideration?
We haven't talked about it since our first meeting. We just got the opinion.
Just got the decision. Okay.
So, we have a task to discuss what the opinion means or how we would think to raise funds for affordable housing.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Otherwise, I want to thank everybody for coming and those presenters for being on time and scheduling it perfectly. And the fill-ins did an excellent job.